Buddy. Thank you for being here. Today is Thursday, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Our opening will be presented by Councilmember Nate Jackson, who will then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right. Love to see you folks with us tonight. And I will say a prayer and then we'll do the pledge. Our dear Father in heaven, we are grateful to be here tonight and to discuss the business of our city. And we're grateful to live here in Kaysville and Utah and to live in this country. We send our hearts out to Israel and all the people affected in the region, the innocent people on both sides. And we pray for them and ask for their comfort. And we are grateful for all the blessings that we have. Say these things. Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, we have two individuals signed up to speak during call to the public, and they are Val Starkey and Jill Durej. We'll invite you to come up in that order and present to us for three minutes. Thank you.
Val Starkey, I appreciate living amongst a bunch of Christians. I want to address the idea of homelessness and what I'm learning about. I've kind of been a little busy with a big house problem, but today focused an hour on the homelessness and this concept of a billboard. I usually bring lots of facts and figures. That's who I am. I was an engineer, but today my facts and figures are simple. I lived and conquered about twenty-five miles east of San Francisco for three and a half years. I commuted on Bart every day, and I understand something of San Francisco. And I can comprehend, though at the time, about forty years ago, there wasn't that much homelessness, but it's increased. I moved to Seattle. I lived about twenty-five miles east of Seattle. I worked in Boeing Everett, but I went to Seattle a lot. Okay? Seattle is a beautiful place. The ferries were beautiful. Washington State's beautiful. Their homeless situation has put them in a totally different world. Okay? I understand that. Being a Christian, I understand I want to help people. However, what's going on in the country is not always helping people. So I hope and pray that as the city considers trying to help homeless, and I understand some of the pressures, I've had some experience, but I've never been homeless. I was without a job for six months, and I understand the pressures of that. But my purpose is, Kaysville is a beautiful place. The citizens of Kaysville are good people, but we can do better than what they've done in Seattle or San Francisco. And I hope and pray that. On a note of the agenda items, I read through the billboard, and it seemed like it really covered two items. It covered the billboard issue, which was connected to the homeless shelter and potential in Clearfield, I guess it was. But it also dealt with the homelessness. So my encouragement is, if you have a complex subject, and you kind of allude to the fact that there's a homeless issue that's at the base of this, just putting it on the agenda item as a billboard issue is a little thin for the public. Okay? You have to kind of understand and read and say, what is really going on? And I understand it's complex, and I understand putting out agenda. But my encouragement, let's have a little more information. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have cataract surgeries and I have to wear glasses. So you guys are blurry, but my paper's clear. That's good, I guess. Anyway, as things in our country, state and city seem to be changing and changing fast, I have considered many questions that I would like to just share with you tonight. Who is Envision Utah? Is the League of Cities and Towns under Envision Utah? Who are the people that are being surveyed and driving a lot of the changes in Utah through these entities? Why is the UN so imprevalent in Utah? And are Envision, Utah, and the Leagues connected to the UN? Why would Governor Cox a few weeks ago issue what seemed to be a warning to city councils that they need to comply with what he and the legislature want them to do? And to say they have and will issue bills to enforce this? Why does one legislator want to have the governor appoint an attorney general and will possibly introduce legislation for this? Is Utah becoming some sort of a sanctuary state? This topic is coming up. Are illegal immigrants being directed to Utah? There are reports stating that when people are being asked where they are going at the border, a lot of them are saying Utah now. Is this why more high density and homelessness? Since graphs came out last week from the Utah workforce regarding Utah's family size, and it confirms that the size of the Utah families are declining, why are we being told that high-density housing is a must to meet the size of Utah families? Is this coming from the leaks of cities and towns and therefore from Envision Utah? When we hear the UN's sustainable goals and we hear zero fatalities and reference fifteen-minute cities or walkable cities, does this refer to our ability to own a car? How would elderly people or people who care for elderly people navigate having to park on the outskirts of a walkable city and then proceed into the city with wheelchair, oxygen, cane, walker, et cetera, and especially in winter months? Or a young mother with a heavy baby carrier, diaper bag, purse, and other young children, instead of being able to park right in front of where you need to go? I've been involved in caregiving for two parents at the same time that needed all of that. I was grateful when I could get my parents as close as possible to an establishment for an easy and safe entrance, especially in bad weather. What are these special districts that can tax the people separate from the government that is already existing? What is their true goal? Bountiful, right now, is considering a hundred and forty-two percent tax increase. Why and how can this even be possible? Why do we hear more and more negative comments being made about single-home dwelling? That used to be a goal and a motive to work hard to provide for your family. Are we, as a country, state, and city, staying true to the fundamental goals and beliefs that made this country so great and strong? Do we still have government representatives that focus their bills, decisions, and actions around what is best for the people they've asked to represent? The people of Kaysville have long protected the small-town feel of this city. They have voted for council members that have shared those values. Kaysville has had many opportunities to be more like Farmington and Leyton. They've kind of rejected those in order to keep the community that we have. Kaysville just about voted, remember, on several other countries. Thank you for your efforts to protect the citizens of Kaysville.
Thank you, Jill. Appreciate your comments, both of you. Okay, conflicts of interest? None to declare. All right. Moving on to the consent items. Someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve consent items A and B.
Okay, so a motion to approve consent items A and B, which are the approval of minutes of September seventh and September twenty-first.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to second. Any discussion? No? Okay, seeing none, call for a vote. Councilmember Adams?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to our work items. Work item five A is billboard sign discussion. Let me just lay a little bit of foundation for this so that I can explain what's going on and why this is on our agenda. Okay, so the state of Utah has required, issued a requirement to Davis County to come up with a code blue shelter. They're calling it a temporary shelter. However, it won't be temporary. It will become a permanent shelter. And so we're tasked with finding a location for a homeless shelter during the months of October fifteenth, I think it's October fifteenth through March, or through April thirtieth. And that is if the temperature drops below a certain degree. Then it's considered a code blue alert, and then we have to provide a temporary shelter for them. Okay, so the reason that this discussion came up is I'm on the homeless task force for Davis County because Kaysville is one of three cities in Davis County that has a senior center. And the senior center has been suggested as a possible location for a nighttime code blue shelter because the senior center isn't being used at nighttime, and there are existing facilities, and we're trying to see, okay, how can we save money, but also meet the requirements that the state has placed upon us to provide this. Kaysville is not a good location for a homeless shelter of any type, especially on City Hall across from the elementary school. Okay? So we've had those discussions. Bountiful, of course, is saying the same thing. Leyton is seeing the same thing. The other potential option in Kaysville would be the emissions building, which is in West Kaysville because it's a county-owned building. Our argument against that as well is that we have no support facilities. When a homeless shelter comes into a community, within a mile of that area completely changes. They're not temporary. So the idea for code blue is that the homeless people that would need shelter would go there at nighttime, and then they would leave in the morning. Where are they going to go? We don't have any mass transit here in Kaysville. We have two bus stops in Kaysville. It doesn't make a lot of sense, but it does make economic sense in terms of, okay, well, it's an existing building. So the discussion came up, and we've had robust discussions about this as a homeless task force. So Mayor Shepherd in Clearfield said, hey, I know of a property in Clearfield. It's a triangular property. It's on the industrial side of Clearfield. It's next to workforce services. It's next to a hospital. It's next to some other facilities. Because our argument has been back to the county and to the state, look, what we need to come up with is a permanent location with facilities. Because ninety, they say ninety percent of the people who are homeless don't want to stay homeless. They want to be able to improve their lives and improve their situation. Just being bused to a location to sleep overnight is not going to solve anything. So Mayor Shepherd said, hey, there's this property that's available. So we reached out to Brandon Wood, who's a broker and represents a lot of businesses and property owners. And we said, hey, go talk to this property owner. And so Brandon did. The property owner happens to be a company that owns billboards. And so they said, yeah, well, we don't really want to sell the property. We have no interest in selling it. We've had higher offers in the past. But we would consider selling the property for a reduction of five dollars a square foot if the cities along I-15 would allow us to put a billboard. So, but here's the caveat. They said, we need all of the cities to agree to this agreement. Otherwise, it's a no-go for us. So we were, as cities, we said, okay, you know what? Let's go back to our cities and have the discussion because it's part of a negotiation process as we're trying to vet out these different opportunities and these different placements for a permanent shelter. And so that's why it's on the agenda tonight. Now, last night, we had a council of governments meeting. We call it a COG meeting. It was here at Kaysville City. And we were able to talk to the mayors, and I just said, hey, what are you guys thinking? How are you feeling about this? And there are several cities who don't happen to have a Davis County property within their city boundary. And they said, well, there's never going to be a shelter here, so no, we're a hard no. We don't want a billboard. Now, most of us don't have, most of us have ordinances to prevent billboards along I-15. That's our desire to maintain that. So they've said, no, we don't want to do that. And we said, well, you guys, this is a Utah problem, homelessness. As much as we want to say, as Davis County, we've never had a shelter here, we don't want to have a shelter here, that's not really a good answer. So, but the sign company and the family said, no, we want everyone along, and then we'll be able to choose where we want to place them. Well, the part of that, so there's a legal issue too. So initially, it was, we were tasked with go back, ask your councils, which we've done, and that's why it's on the agenda. We can have a conversation. I just wanted to give you the update of what happened last night. And that was that some cities said, no, we don't even want to entertain it. We're not even going to talk to our councils about this because we don't want billboards, and we have nothing to lose because there's no potential shelter that would be going in within your city boundaries. So that's where we are. Legally, there are some problems with creating an ordinance, and Nick could speak to that if you want to. Nick, are you prepared to do that or just generally speaking to it? And then the ordinance to prevent other billboards. I mean, there's a problem with just saying, okay, one company can, we put a billboard, and then nobody else can, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there's some real challenges there. And I'm happy to address any questions. Generally, what the challenges are is that because billboards are such a highly litigated issue, they require typically special noticing requirements. And I anticipate that every city that enacted this would have multiple applications come in, and it would be difficult to say, we're only going to allow billboards from one company. We would not be able to do that. And as soon as you did that, I think Salt Lake City litigates billboard issues almost every year, and they are heavily litigated. And I foresee that many cities across Davis County that enacted ordinances that allowed billboards would likely face some kind of litigation.
Well...
They're just, billboard's such a valuable commodity that it's worth a billboard company's time to litigate those issues.
Well, thank you, Nick. So initially, when we had this conversation as our task force, we said, okay, yeah, we're open to solutions. So let's go back to our cities and let's talk about it. But then when the people on the task force did, and the word spread amongst the mayors, initially, it was sure, let's have conversations. I think Kaysville City is one of the first to actually be able to put it on an agenda as an action, not an action item, as a work item to kind of talk about it. But then the feedback we're getting is they're talking to their legal departments, and they're saying, okay, this would be a huge mess. And the city managers are saying that too. So anyway, so that's where we are, guys. And go ahead and feel free to talk about what you think about that.
Sure. Yeah, you know, my initial thought was, well, first, a lot of questions. I mean, where in Davis County are we experiencing homeless issues? I mean, I don't know that we have a problem here in Kaysville. I mean, I do know in the hollow behind my house there off Nichols Road, which is probably Fruit Heights or Farming, you know, that folks have come up and gotten into our backyard and used our water, probably for showers. But realistically, we don't see it around the town. And so that makes it very difficult to, you know, want to address or say, you know, yeah, well, we're happy to have these signs if we don't have the shelter because I don't know that we need a shelter. And then we're bringing in problems. We're bringing in, you know, potential to help. And I got the whole code blue. And, you know, like Val said, you know, you're talking, we're a Christian community. And even those that aren't Christians, you want to help those round. But where do we have a problem? And I would want to hear that. You know, the state mandating you need to do this, when do we have a real problem? The other thing, and then I'll yield time, is what are we doing as a county or as a state, and I'd say as a county because it's a county issue now, to teach them how to fish instead of just feeding, you know, providing the fish?
Right.
You know, how are we actually trying to solve the problem instead of giving additional handouts that our citizens pay for and along? I mean, do we know?
Well, and that is why our push has been that we need to create a permanent facility that is surrounded by support facilities, workforce services, mental health facilities, things like that. My suggestion has been to have a private company do it. Red Barn Farms does a fantastic job. Now, they're dealing with incarcerated people who are now not in jail, but they've got a great program. Switchpoint has a great program. There are some private companies that do this really, really well. Anyway, so yes, to your point, absolutely agree, a hundred percent on board with that. Now, as far as the data, as far as, you know, who's homeless and where are they? Because we don't have a lot of homeless people, at least that I've seen in Kaysville, and I've lived here a long time too. But we do have people in Davis County that are homeless. And of course, we want to be able to help them. And, but like you said, not bring a problem to us. Let's try to contribute to the solutions of fixing a problem that exists where it exists, would be my thought there. Yeah. Go ahead. Oh, okay. So anyway, so you guys, the reason it's on as a discussion item was just, is there any appetite to do that? If we have no appetite to do that, then that's great. We had the discussion. That's what we were asked to do.
Well, one of the other things I'm really concerned about is, in the past, we've never allowed off-premise signs. And it's really been able to control how signs are put and where they're put in the city and actually what goes on them. You know, these other, and I'm with Nick, I think one brings ten. And with bringing ten, you really can't, you can't dictate what's going to go on that sign, which is one of the things that Abby was saying, you know, I mean, council member, sorry. But yeah, off-premise signs have just never been allowed. And I think because of that, we dealt with one sign issue in the last while. So we know how passionate people in Kaysville are about signs. So, and I would not even, I wouldn't, I'd want to get a whole bunch more information from other cities and what, and, you know, I mean, we're just talking one property that came up available. And already, they're trying to ride in their future company profits, I guess, I don't want to say. But I just think, you know, I like the fact we do not allow, we have, off-premise signs are not allowed in the city. I think it helps us regulate a lot of what you see in other cities that people don't like.
Right.
Yeah. And Mayor, thank you for allowing us or the city also to have this discussion. You mentioned that some of the cities won't even have the discussion. And I like the opportunity to have the discussion on public record so that, how else will we notify the public? And so I think it's great that we're having this discussion. First and foremost, yeah, we do have some homelessness issues. We have a lot of young kids, actually, surprisingly, with mental health and homeless issues, high school kids and whatnot. And so there's ways to do this. And, you know, it is, we need to be compassionate, and we need to look after the most vulnerable people in our society, irregardless of why they are in that situation. But with that being said, I'm actually kind of appalled by this company that's basically using extortion, that's a strong word, to not only sell their property, which would be a couple million dollars for the county to buy the property, but also to put up billboards in every city in Davis County. To me, that's appalling. And this is a company that's been around for many years, well-respected. Almost every legislator in the state gets money from this company. And not just this company, but there are the other competing companies as well. They are a powerful lobby in the state. They're very well-known down on Capitol Hill. And it's sad to me that a company like that, and I know some of the folks that are in this company, and I respect them and I like them personally, but it's sad to me that a company like that would not take pause and to see what good they can do and help with the community. Because we have so many other companies that donate money and time to all kinds of causes. And to me, it's just kind of a sad way to have this conversation to start it out. Second of all, if the county is suggesting that we turn our senior centers into homeless shelters, that is a completely disservice to seniors. Second of all, we have Kaysville Elementary across the street. I want every single mother and father who has a child that goes to Kaysville Elementary to speak up. I want to hear from them, to hear their idea. And so the fact that the state tells us that we need to do this, they don't give us resources. They don't, they don't offer to help find land or money or whatnot. To me, it's a poorly written policy. Now, I asked some of the mayors, and we've talked about this internally too, what repercussions are built in. And there's none that are built into the policy right now. And we don't even have the data as far as like how many people and what this will look like. Because a homeless shelter is not just, you can have a homeless shelter with beds. There's homeless shelters that provide needles for safe drug usage, whatever that means. There's homeless shelters where families and kids are involved, where they have services, mental health services. So there's a whole range. And we just don't have enough information. And so it's, as a county, as a city, we really need more information. And it makes sense to have a shelter like this next to mental health resources, medical resources, mass transit along the train route. And it's just, I would never support putting billboards in our city. We have a beautiful landscape here, and I just, it takes away from our landscape to the east and to the west, and I just would never do that, especially based on such an important issue as this.
Thank you. Councilmember Hunt?
Okay, so I have a question, and then I have some comments to make after it. And hopefully, this question doesn't make it seem like I'm in favor of any specific thing. But if we were to go down to this road with billboards, could, in the ordinance, we just say we can have two within city limits? That's it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's how you'd have to write it. You'd have to write it so that any business, any company could do that. You have to be, you have to write a really good, tight ordinance. Because, like, and I mean, we should do that with everything. I'm not saying that. But because of the billboard companies, and I don't blame them. They have a business there doing that. That's fine. But because they have deep pockets, and they're just willing to litigate any loophole, any ambiguity, anything that they can, generally, that's been their approach, is to litigate these ordinances as far as they can. So that's the concern.
Nice. It's very pleasant. Okay, so then I guess my comments after that are that, well, I don't know, it may ramble, but here goes. So after we moved back to Utah from Hawaii, and maybe it was like this before, I noticed how many billboards we have in this state. And especially, maybe just having kids, but living here in Kaysville where we don't have any, and then driving into Salt Lake and seeing the billboards that they have, I hate the thought of having any billboards here. I have three daughters, and it seems like ninety-nine percent of billboards are telling girls and women that they need to do something to make themselves look better. And I'm very passionate about not having those kinds of things everywhere where my kids can see them. There's one on the way to Salt Lake. It has an image of a lip injection, needle and all. It's disgusting and disturbing, and I can't imagine having that anywhere here in Kaysville. But when you allow billboards, those are the kinds of images that they can put on them. And you can't stop it because it's freedom of speech, which of course, I love freedom of speech. But anyway. And then just, but I do also, you know, feel the pinch. I think, you know, as Mr. Starkey mentioned, he said he was without a job for a while. We feel for these families. And according to some statistics that I've read within the last few years, twelve hundred homeless youth in Davis County alone. That's a huge number. Obviously, it's something that needs to be addressed. I don't think any of us here are saying, well, it's not a problem. We're not going to deal with it. It's something that needs to be addressed. People deserve help. They need help getting back on their feet. But I, and this is not, this is not a statement against anyone who's homeless. But generally speaking, homelessness requires a specific set of resources that they need. And as we've brought up, we don't have those here. We don't have tons of mental health facilities. We don't have a transit system. Based on when I used the bus in Free Fair February, if you want to get into Kaysville, you either have to go to some sort of a hub somewhere else to get into Kaysville, or already be on the two lines that run through the city. And that doesn't make any sense. If they're going to a hub in another city, why should we send them here? I would, I don't think it would be helpful to them. I don't think it would be conducive to them getting a good job. So while I ask the question about one or two billboards, I'm not in love with that idea. But I also recognize that homelessness is an issue. But I would one hundred percent fight like a lion to protect the children over there. Because I'm not saying all homeless people are dangerous, but there is, there is an element of that in any situation like that. And there's no way that I would ever allow that to happen. So to feel like I'm placed in a position where I'm saying, well, we're doing bad stuff for kids by putting billboards. We're doing bad stuff for kids by putting it by the elementary school, is not a great place to be. I like to come to these meetings to have a solution or maybe a compromise. I just, I don't have it yet. So if we move forward on this, I just would want additional information. So I guess that's kind of my thing is, I'm echoing what everyone said, we just don't have enough information on this to really... have enough information on this to really push it forward.
Totally agree. Do you have anything to add?
I just agree. I agree with everything everybody has said, and I think that, I think we have pretty good direction as far as it goes. You know, it's really sad that they wouldn't think of an opportunity to help people if it's a good location, like Mayor Shepherd's saying. And it wouldn't cause a lot of heartache for like surrounding neighbors. Yeah, you'd hope that they would take a fair price for it, for the land and do it. And that's, I think, how we have to do it. I don't like horse trading, especially when they're tying our hands like that, so.
Thank you. All right, well, I appreciate the direction from council, I think we have it, to not move forward on that. I was just going to add, these discussions about the senior centers possibly being a code blue shelter, it's not, that's not been decided. I'm not trying to throw the county under the bus by saying that's where it's going to go. It's been brought up in conversations because they're county-owned properties, and they are looking at multiple county-owned properties throughout Davis County. That would be the cheaper option. Our suggestion, my strong belief is that we need to just invest the money that it takes to build something permanent, so that we can help people in an actual way, not just pass them through, because passing through doesn't work. And I need to kind of retract what I said, it's not that we don't have homeless people in Kaysville, we do. We don't have encampments in Kaysville. But we do have families that are displaced, that are struggling here in Kaysville, just like everywhere else, like you mentioned, 1,200, 1,200 kids in the teen centers throughout Davis County. And it's a big deal here. So it's not that we're not humane and that we're not sensitive, we are, we just want to make sure that we do it in a thoughtful way and we support a solution, rather than just a program, I guess, is kind of what we're. It was Switchpoint in St. George. Yes.
Can I just add, and thank you, Mayor, for saying that? Because I would love to be a part of the discussion, I would love if our entire council, Leighton, Farmington, all the surrounding cities, if we got together and if we pulled in Catholic Community Services and the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints and the Baptist Church up the street, up here in Leighton, I can't remember the name of it, but they put on a fantastic Fourth of July service. But I would love it if we involved in small businesses and came up with a lot of ideas and all the residents of our communities. Because I think all of us want to get to a solution. And we can come up with a brilliant plan that works to help these kids if we all come together. And so I would like more of that, just as you stated, Mayor.
Yeah, well, thank you, I appreciate, appreciate the conversation and the discussion, Council, that was, that was great. We discussed it and we, we're good. Do we need a motion on that?
No, I think, because it's a work item, I think it's clear of the direction.
Okay, good. All right, that brings us to our next item, which is 5B Mutton Hollow Annexation Plan Discussion. I'll turn the time over to Jason for that.
Great, thanks, Mayor. Just a little background and reminder history of the Mutton Hollow Annexation. The Mutton Hollow residents had written a letter to the county earlier this year asking their help to talk to Kaysville about getting annexed. There's been discussions as well with Leighton, who has expressed no interest at all in annexing Mutton Hollow. And we've had staff look at that, and there's been, there has been a meeting or two with the county. We've had really no interest expressed in annexing. But I think the last meeting was in June with some of the staff and the mayor in the county, in which it was expressed, you know, that we had no interest. But we hadn't really heard any, anything since June. And there's been discussions about why Mutton Hollow is still on Kaysville's Annexation Plan, plan that's been around for several years. We've kind of looked at that and really find no reason to keep it on the plan. Frankly, we've looked at some of the numbers as well. The biggest issue, biggest concern is the cost. If the city were to annex Mutton Hollow, the estimate, the rough estimate we have is at least $4 million just to upgrade the infrastructure. That includes taking all the homes in Mutton Hollow and putting them on our meter system, both power and water. Likely, a new power substation would be needed. All the curb and gutter and sidewalks would be, you know, brought up to Kaysville standards eventually. And that's just kind of the basic level of bringing them up to standards, and that's at least $4 million. That does not include costs such as potentially having to purchase the infrastructure from Rocky Mountain Power, or deal with the Mutton Hollow water, you know, infrastructure and a lot of other things. So we also looked at the potential revenue if it were annexed. And property tax from Mutton Hollow would generate roughly $130,000 a year, which we don't think would even hardly cover the ongoing maintenance costs, let alone the costs of upgrading all the infrastructure. So we're really concerned about that. You know, obviously, there's no sales tax also to support, you know, the needed services there, which would further dilute some of our sales tax money to, you know, spread it out into, you know, even more residential areas. So the recommendation from staff is that this is not a good idea, but we wanted to officially bring it up with council and hear any questions or comments, concerns. And if it's the desire of the council, we will start the process of removing that from the Annexation Plan. So any questions or concerns, happy to address those.
Thanks, Jason. I was just going to say, so it was when we were between city managers. And so I went to the county with Josh and Dexter, and we're sitting there talking and they said, well, Kaysville, it's on your Annexation Plan to annex in Mutton Hollow. I didn't know that, that was news to me. And so I sat there and thought, oh, my gosh. Because if, anyway, so that's why, if we're not, if we have no intention of doing it, let's remove it from our plan, is what I'm suggesting, what we're all suggesting. So if you need more information about it before we move it forward, that's fine, they can, I'm sure you can provide any other additional information that you might need. When we went to the county, we said, okay, why would we do this? And they said, well, because, you know, we're really not in the business of being a city and you guys are a city, and it's in your plan anyway. And most of it's within your boundary, what would be your boundary. And then we said, well, you're going to give us some money to increase the infrastructure and to bring it up to code for their water system, because it's very old and it's outdated and apparently it's not really robust? And, and the response was, well, maybe we could give you a couple million. We thought, well, if they're willing to maybe give us a couple million, it's probably a bigger problem. And then they also met with Leighton with the same sort of response. And so, you know, up to you guys, of course, to do that or not do that, but.
I'd like to make a motion that we move the Mutton Hollow, removing the Mutton Hollow Annexation portion from our Annexation Plan to an action item.
Second, with, yeah, the friendly amendment that we would still be willing to listen to, like if the county came to us and said,
Here's five million?
Here's 10?
Here's $10 million and, and we're going to give you this land here, or yeah, this or that, like, I mean, I don't, but we're just taking it off of the plan.
The only reason I, I wouldn't want that friendly amendment is because the issue with Rocky Mountain Power is leaps and bounds, I think, above all the other issues. The cost of trying to purchase, we've tried to purchase little portions of Rocky Mountain in the past, that has been an absolute nightmare. And I think that this issue's come up with probably every council in the last 20, 30 years. And it's just time to remove it from our Annexation, from our Annexation Plan here. And that's why I would make the motion to.
I'll withdraw my friendly amendment. Make it unfriendly non-amendment.
Do we still have a second from you?
Just a second.
There's a second, okay. Okay, do we have any discussion, council member?
And to Councilmember Blackham's point, I completely agree. And I think, you know, keeping it on our long-term plan, it probably does a disservice to these folks here, because to some degree, the county may just wait until we make a decision on it. But I think unless there's a really serious proposal that works for us and doesn't put the burden on Kaysville residents, let's take it off, we could always put it back on, so.
Well, thank you, and I'll just add that just because we remove it, if we decide to do that, doesn't mean the county won't still ask. Any other comments?
I'm just going to kind of copy what everyone else said, like, I wish we could, there's some cool parts about this property that I think are so super awesome, but I just don't think we can justify putting that kind of a burden on our current residents.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are we ready for a vote? Okay, Councilmember Hunt.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you so much, Council, appreciate that. All right, anything to report? Do we have any council member reports or council member ideas or? Go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Today was the Institute for Land, Water and Air presentation to the governor, so that was a cool thing to get to be a part of. We present a pamphlet, a big thing about the state of Utah's land, water and air as part of the Janet Quinney Lawson Institute for Land, Water and Air. So it's a cool event, but additionally, it's a really cool thing that they're trying to do, which is get policymakers and people doing the research on these environmental issues together so that we can make better decisions for the future of Utah. So it's a really cool thing. But if you want to see the report, I think it's, if you just Google like Utah State and then Institute for Land, Water and Air, you should be able to pull it up and see the current report. So check it out, it's cool, it's got good pictures and really interesting information.
Thank you for attending those, I really appreciate that. Anyone else?
I have a couple of things, just to bring the council up to date a little bit. So right now, the plan is they should be paving the Burton Lane roundabout in the next week, and they also are going to be paving the Connector Road roundabout down there. They're trying to get those roads open before inclement weather, so that we can get all this traffic from going on these detours. And then if all goes well, the plan is to actually get West Davis with cars on it by the first of the year. It won't be complete, there will still be things that have to be done, but there's a real incentive for the contractor to have cars on that road by December 31st. And so they're working at that. And I just wanted to give you a couple updates, because if you're like me, you get a lot of questions about the roundabout on Burton Lane and 50 West. But they're supposedly going to pave this week, and they should, they still got to put some raised sidewalks in, I mean, raised crosswalks in, on each one and a few things. But it's getting close to getting open.
That's good. Thank you, great news. Anyone else?
Yeah, just two things. Would council have, can I ask like, or have you asked like, kind of a poll to see if council would be interested in two things? The first would be kind of strange, but our neighborhood has coyotes all of a sudden in it. Yeah, and they're, I killed a couple cats.
Oh, you're in trouble now.
Terry, you're not going to win reelection, buddy. That was bad. Meow, rare. Anyway, I don't even know, I guess I've had a couple neighbors contact me and ask if we could hunt them. And so I had to ask chief, and chief said that we would have to change the ordinance to allow for hunting in that certain area, and it'd have to be like a controlled type of a deal. I, like, initially, I'm like thinking about all the dangerous things about it, but I've thought if we had something that was like, had to involve one of the officers being there, and it had to be at daylight, and it had to be like a controlled deal, then you could probably do some coyote calls and use buckshot. I don't, it sounds crazy, right? But also, they're my neighbors. To me, you know.
And, and I'll levy aside, I would feel more comfortable if you had like animal control.
They won't do it. They won't do it. Animal control won't come in and do it, nobody will do it. Like, just as like an example, I had a raccoon get stuck in my window well when I lived over on Mutton Hollow. And it was in my window well, like biting off its own arm. Animal control wouldn't come, you know, nobody would come to get this raccoon out. And so I had to take care of it myself with a two-by-four, which was not fun. And so.
Could be.
You know, well, it could be, so. So I don't think anybody, like DWR, nobody's going to deal with it. I don't know if it's even an issue, but I just didn't want to bring it up if, if people were going to turn it down. What are you thinking here?
Well, I'm happy to do some research on that and see how other cities are dealing with that issue. I know that Los Angeles actually has coyotes that they've seen in the city, and I would imagine that across the west, there's got to be some urban areas that are dealing with this issue. I'll do some research and present.
Kind of get back to us? Yeah, because I think it has to do with the West Davis Corridor going in, I think they've displaced them, like basically on that side, so. Anyway. The second thing, which is a little bit more serious, with, Mayor sent out the information, or she was at the meeting where Governor Cox talked about the housing crisis, and he was pretty adamant about us handling it as a city. I don't know necessarily what we can do as a city to handle the cost of homes. But I talked to Nick, and I wonder if everybody would be amiable, amiable, to Nick looking into some type of, you know, Governor Cox used the analogy saying that by, that we're delaying these homes from going in and that that's increasing the cost? Which to me, I don't know how we're delaying it, but also I don't know that anybody's presented us with affordable housing options. And so I wondered if we could come up with something that said we will fast-track housing, make some type of a fast-track for housing that comes in with certain stipulations that are affordable. For the, for example, I guess, like if someone were to come in and say, hey, we'll build homes under $350,000 that are 1,800 square feet, then those people would get some type of a priority speed. If what he's saying is the speed with which it gets done, that we would offer that. Then we're meeting his needs.
Well, and that's the hard thing, to make sure they're not.
Well, there would have to be something in there that, yeah, I mean, obviously, they'd have to hit our codes and things like that, I don't know.
I think that's something, yeah, we can definitely look into it. I think some of the, that's something that's been brought up and discussed already a little bit, just, it's a little complicated, just because, you know, a lot of these developments have portions that are affordable and portions that aren't. And, you know, you just approve and fast-track certain, you know, units, and that just can create some, some challenges in itself, but.
Like shoddy building, or what are you thinking as far as the challenge? You mean that then they just build the affordable stuff?
Well, if somebody comes in with a plan for a subdivision and they say, okay, you know, these units are affordable and these are just market price, you know, it's almost like, it's, you can't just piecemeal sometimes just the affordable units. Not, I don't know if you can or can't, but that's just one of the challenges that I think has been brought up at least. So, but I guess what I'm getting at is, I think we can certainly look at that and just try to put our heads together on what we can do to help fast-track and make, make it easier to implement.
It'd be nice, is like, I mean, as a, as a council, if we could all agree on like the types of homes that are affordable that we would like to see in Kaysville? If we came up with sort of a framework, you know, like I've mentioned before, Mike's mentioned before, that, that my first home was over on Mutton Hollow, it was 2,000 square feet. And it's like, it was a rambler, and they aren't building those anymore. Or at least I'm not seeing them being built anymore. It's all 3, 4,000 square feet, if it's a 2,000 square feet, it's a townhome. So if we were to say, yeah, build an affordable house like this, then we're going to fast-track? I don't know.
You know, it's a really good idea. So Commissioner Stevenson had this idea of creating an overlay that is an affordable housing overlay kind of thing, where you make certain exceptions for, for homes that are under a certain threshold, and you allow them to build the higher density, but it has to be within a certain square footage, you know, a minimum or a maximum. And so they can't just build 17 triple-story townhomes, you know, $600,000, but they would actually have to build a starter home.
I'm just trying to think about, how would we put the onus back on the developers? Because, you know, if the governor's saying, you guys need to be doing this, well, we're not the ones building the home, we can't go out and build a bunch of homes, you know, and have them be affordable. So I don't know how we kind of toss the ball back. you know, and have them be affordable. So I don't know how we kinda toss the ball back to the, I don't know.
I think it's a great idea.
All right.
It's a great idea to be able to tell them, look, this is what we're doing in a bigger way, even though we do do that with our moderate income housing reports. Anyway, go ahead, Councilmember Jackson.
And you bring up really two good points on Councilmember Adams. I don't know if I'd be in favor of hunting in the area. I would.
Come on down. We'll get some hunter's orange on you.
Let me clarify. I would be absolutely against hunting in that area. But the county, as far as I understand, all the cities now paying to the county and the county is now handling animal services. And the county is spending somewhere in the ballpark of 17 million to build an animal shelter. That's a big price tag. And so I think this is probably a good opportunity to take this example, gather stories, and then perhaps mayor can take it to the council of governments and talk to the county, but we really need to start talking to the county and know how they handle these animals. Because coyotes are very dangerous. It's cats today. It's gonna be a little child tomorrow or something. So I think that's actually really serious. And to the other point, I love the idea of figuring out like what type of houses would work here. I love the idea of having a developer come in, as long as it's in the right place to build 2,000 square foot or smaller homes, because there's so many people that would appeal to. I am concerned, and I think it's good just to get this out in the open. So the state legislature, they've, every year, they've been coming out with so many pieces of legislation to basically tell all of us communities to comply. Otherwise, they will withhold road funds and other things. It's my understanding that just about every community in Davis County has complied with everything that's put forth. We have as a city. And that was mentioned to the governor and a few of the legislators. And the governor, there was no acknowledgement of that. And the response to that was, well, you're not doing enough and we have the right as a state to come in and take your ability and power away from your zoning, from your development. Technically, it's right, but it's absolutely against everything we believe in as Americans, as Utahns. And it's the legislative body of the state that needs to put forth the policy that we can deliberate with, that we should comply to. And so I understand that the governor's concerned and we do have a housing shortage in many ways. But I don't know if it's entirely fair because we have been working hard as this city and other cities that we've spoken with. And so that's my thought on that.
Okay, well, thank you. Councilmember reports. We appreciate all of that. And it's been great discussion. So appreciate you all being here. And hopefully you brought some, we've shared some nuggets of information with you that you can go home and think more about. Okay, Jason, do you have anything to report?
Just real quick, the Alchemy Group is making some progress. We've been having regular meetings with them. They have a soft target of opening by the Fourth of July parade next year, so that's exciting. We're gonna do everything we can to help them get to that target date. Within the next few days, we should have all of the city, you know, storage out. There's a lot of stuff in there that needs to be cleared out. And been working on getting that out. Cole has in the departments. And the next step is really just to start the environmental abatement, which is primarily just the boiler. It's gotta be cut up, asbestos boiler, and then they can start the interior demolition. One thing that I wanted to just kind of plant a seed, though, with everyone is there's been discussions about the roof. It's, it's not the original roof really that you can, if you go out tonight, you'll see, you know, there's a lot of mechanical equipment up on top of the roof. You can see where they've taken the original peak of the roof and kind of made sort of a hip roof and a flat roof on the two ends where they've mounted all the mechanical equipment. And what they like to do right now, that is not really seismically sound, that those trusses. In fact, the way they, I guess, used to build the trusses back in the day was, and Mike, you could, Councilmember Blackham, maybe speak to this, is basically just put two, you know, trusses together with a nail in the middle. And nowadays, they brace those with metal plates. And so they really want to just replace the entire roof for two reasons. Well, actually, a couple of few reasons. Number one, to improve the seismic codes. And then also, when they mount the new equipment with all these restaurants, it's gonna be a substantial amount of equipment. They'd like to hide that and build more or less a well on the east side of the building, the east part of the roof. So I wish I would have put a picture up. But if you can picture sort of having your typical, from the main street side, typical-looking roof, and then on the back side facing, facing east, having sort of like a flat roof where all that equipment can kind of hide behind the side-facing main street. And that way, it would kind of look like the original roof. It'd be really, in a way, a restoration of the original appearance. They'd also like to change the asphalt shingles to match the metal seam roof, you know, that we've got in the other buildings here on the city hall block. So it would really be a significant upgrade. And then additionally, with the new trusses, they could create more space on the interior, you know, just kind of a different style of truss. So really a much improved idea. But I think, you know, if we take the roof off, that's gonna be a, generate a lot of concerns and questions, of course. So I wanted to kind of get that out there early, that it really would be, we think, an improvement in the long run and both aesthetically and in a way historically as well with the original appearance from the, from the main street side at least. And just wanted to kind of get that out there, something that's being discussed. That's all.
Thank you so much. We're excited about that. Oh, and one last thing I was just gonna mention is, Jason has asked, is Josh gonna go light the star for us?
Oh, yeah.
You wanna talk about that?
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, mayor had the idea of lighting the Kaseville star for, in support of Israel and just in support of hoping and praying for peace in that region. As you all know, we've had, that star's been there for 60 years or something like that. And I know it was last lit, well, it was lit for the Ukraine support back in February of 2022. So we're planning to light it up on Monday night, this coming Monday. And something will go out in the news, the Hometown Post tomorrow, kind of telling people about what we're doing. And just again, bringing people's attention to it in some small way and hopefully strengthening our community as well to support peace and keep that in our minds.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that. All right, well, we appreciate you all. Anything else? No? We're good? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Also motion.
Okay, so move, okay, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, do we need a five-minute break or do we want to go right in? Yep, okay.
No.
Yeah, it'll be really short. We have had a little bit, I think we've had maybe one or two requests in the last couple of years to annex in. Now, the community can apply. Oh, is it? Oh, maybe a minus two. Okay, he turned. Anyway, it's green now, thank you. All right, everyone, we want to welcome you to the Kaseville Business Park Architectural Review Committee meeting. So welcome, committee members. The agenda is as follows. Consideration, so the first item is a consideration of a monument sign for Reading Horizons located at 1194 West Flint Meadow Drive. I'll turn the time over to Dan to present.
All righty, folks. This is my new friend, Robin Stout. He represents the sign company. And we've been chatting. The sign is gonna be just a monument sign out in front there. Just give you background real quick. The frontage of that lot's 406 feet, I believe. And they are entitled to go 1.5 feet, square feet for the frontage up to 120. So the maximum they could do is 120. Their sign, they're proposing is four by six, so it's 24 square feet. So we're way below the maximum. He's gonna stay 10 foot behind the property line. That's ordinance. And basically, it's smaller than, than maximum. It's set back far enough. It meets all the zoning requirements and it meets all the requirements for the business park down there. I'll turn the time over to him. That's about really all I can say about it.
Okay, thank you very much. Hi.
Do you have any questions for me?
Will this be a lighted sign?
It will.
And how light will it be? How bright?
We're gonna light this with 12-volt LEDs, so it's gonna be green.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Nope?
Nope. This is easy.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. You can sit down and we will move on here.
Thank you.
Okay. Looks like we're ready for a motion. Yeah.
Real quick.
Can you solve the homelessness problem for us in Davis County?
Or the coyote? I guess if we turn the lights hot light.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consideration of a monument sign for Reading Horizons located at 1194 West Flint Meadow Drive.
And I'll second that.
Okay, thanks. We have a motion and a second. Any conversations, comments?
I love it.
Okay, all right. Council, or Committee Member Blackham, we'll start with you.
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you so much for being here. Okay, motion to adjourn. Does someone want to make, okay, all in favor? Okay, thanks, everybody.
Second my motion to move it.
That was fast and easy. Yeah, almost, right? Thanks, guys.